Good to go?
Good to go.
Good to go, okay. Welcome all. This is an ordinary meeting of the Board of Trustees here at the Newbury Town Library. My name is Alexander Burke and in attendance...
Karen Livers.
Dick Raven.
Beth Sonami.
Erin Anna Harper-Price.
And all of us extend our congratulations to you both.
Thank you.
And appreciation that you've stepped forward to become a trustee with us. We all miss Dick, needless to say. But there we are, moving forward. First item here is we need to organize ourselves as a board of trustees and according to the statute, designate a chair and designate a secretary. So as said, have we any thoughts about designating a chair?
I would like to be the chair.
If the move and seconded other.
You're good.
Okay, so we have a chair, thank you, thank you. We need also to designate a secretary. I'd like to move that Raven become our secretary going forward.
Dick.
For sure.
How many things?
Oh, okay. So those things out of the way, we need to consider approval of meetings in minutes of our last meeting, which those minutes are a month and a half, so let us keep moving. To our director's report. And in that context, I'll ask on the... I mean, mine?
I have the March.
Yeah, we don't like those lines.
I have a couple of them along. You say they're missing or they're not taken or...
I believe they were not taken because they certainly didn't take them during.
I wasn't there, I'm sure.
We're blind, we're foolish. I'm not thinking of consequence for it except this statement. All right, Erin, well, that will be now presenting the first director's report. Most of us have seen the report, read through it. Do you want Erin to go through this? What's your sense of things, guys?
I read it, so.
You good?
I think we just want to highlight, but otherwise. Let's see, there's really, aside from the other things we might discuss, not too much that's new. I do have an update on construction.
Please.
We are scheduled to begin on the 23rd, which is Monday. So I forgot from James on what begin means and pretty much he faces good me and start packing. So it's not a day that walls are coming down. It means that they'll get the storage pod out there and start packing things up and moving our work desks and materials either where our new locations will be or at dispart. So that requires some coordination with Matthew Cooper, who is the IT person over at Town Hall. He was here today because we have a vibration, but he'll also be helping us get printers moved down to children's and computers and things like that, get our networking things cleared up. So that we need to coordinate tomorrow. Let's see if I can work out a schedule like that.
Glenn Thomas is going to speak more loudly. I'm hearing it here anyway and we have the mass song and it's just not helpful. I'm so sorry.
No, that's understood.
I'm old.
Long story short is that we start on Monday with packing. And however long that takes, we're not completed, then we'll move into demo and then we'll move into re-pack.
Do we have resources to do the packing?
I believe James has people coming here to do packing, or at least a significant portion of it. Certainly heavy lifting, like the furniture desks and things like that. But our individual things, like our files and stuff like that, will be moving ourselves.
Do you need help?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. There've been some of the most buyers to put in as of late and it's the end of the budget year. So, and you know, we're still trying to hire them. So yes, it might be a good idea just to say yes, so we can come.
I mean, the worst thing we do by showing up here on Monday at what time is to be on the foot.
Yeah, true.
So, oh, and we do have a staff meeting from 12 to 2, our first one as of the week on Tuesday, which has been planned. And we have Marsha Cavan, Dust Pearl, and Ellen is coming in as well. So I'm hoping after we schedule that, but we'll have to see what the week brings. We get kind of a lot of...
The electronics has not been rewired, not that bad if something's working right now, but... It hasn't been rewired to the other workstations, has it?
Rewired? No, because it all has to kind of get done at one time. So for the time being, we've been working, you know, in our offices just because that's what we can, was quickly and easily get our work done. So we didn't want to move ourselves, having time. So let's see. I do have, I have some updates on the funds. I did make more progress since sending you the documents for this meeting and learned a little bit more about our waste management fund, which I've been very curious about how it goes. And notes, so we have about $10,000 or $11,000 in a fund called Waste Management. And where it came from is that years past, somebody donated stock to the library for company waste management. Remember, I mean, that's actually the stock of that company. It's a needle for a town to own stock so they couldn't keep it as stock. And so it got turned into what is now Waste Management Fund. And it really hasn't been used, that I can tell.
So it's carried.
I'm going to find out more. Deanna and I are going to have a meeting to double tomorrow. She's dealing with the end of the fiscal year as well. So we're going to do it in end of July or early August. And we're going to get more into it. But that's, I think, the last remaining fund that we explain. What is it, how much is in there, how is it spendable? It's for children's, so it is the amount of opportunities for that for children's. And so it's added to the next.
Given what happened today to the financials, it's...
It's awful. So that's really the only other update. I think you all saw that the credit card is not going to happen. So we are trying to find new pieces of software that will allow for invoicing. But we lose purity on Monday, which is our scheduling software for computers and things. I did start processing our website company to have a create an online form that will accomplish the same task. It's just a question of capacity for me.
I did a web search. Libraries and credit cards. Auto libraries have, they have corporate cards through a bank in town. Sometimes it's through the trustees and sometimes it's not. So I'm wondering, and when you say it's not going to happen...
So it's going to happen through the town.
So the question is whether we can get one of the banks that we're close to to serve us.
That's a great question.
So does anybody here have any? No people have any of the banks?
The issue became within Town Hall, a cluster of invoices going from multiple directions within the town employment. And the accountant and assistant accountant found it difficult to deal with. We've established a contingency. We do have the others on fine card, followed by practical suggestions from immediately ago. So that's, that's good. But in terms of the library, I've got a tone card.
I do have a suggestion, granted, the relatively new assistant clerk worked at, I don't say it, twenty-four years.
Oh, wow.
Right.
So she'd be...
Oh, she knew, yeah.
And following up on that, Kim Rock, who is ADP at the institution, lives in life here. So stimulating us all.
Yeah, I would take it all, but I can't.
No, no, no. Don't pay no attention. Ideas flow. All this stuff can be done. Could we revert for just a moment, loose end on one of the funds? I was taken aback by this Hans Lor request.
Yes.
Had not heard of it.
Is that on... I had not heard of it either.
Middle of page two, above my angle. On the printout.
So, um, yeah, so this is a pure gift and donation.
Yes.
So in putting this together, it first looked like the way that things were organized in the spreadsheets, that for instance, the waste management was in gift and donations. It's not. This comes for us. I believe, um, in terms of that fund, no, it's not. I think that goes into gift and donations.
According to the... It says that included in the gift and memorial fund.
But I can get more information on that one too when I leave, Deanna.
We still don't know what the corpus of these funds, you'll get there, I know.
No, I have the totals of what we have from Town Hall. So they send out a very detailed multi-page expense sheet, basically with every single expense, every single fund, both town expenses as well as what we've spent out of our funds. So, and this is not listed on there, it's a separate line item. So I will double check, so, but I believe it's part of gift and donations to try to reserve the hot number. And any interest earned, it looks like...
Are there restrictions upon gift and memorial or whatever proper?
Right, no, no restrictions.
And did all of you chose?
Yes, and that leads me to one of my questions for the Board of Trustees, which is because it's year end and we're trying to spend our nineteen seventy-two year bills. Isn't this a procedural question? Do the trustees need to approve any expenditures from the gift and donations fund? I feel like that's been something asked.
We have brought them out of the past.
So if I were, you know, we have our invoices, it'll be $79 here, $100 here for books or CDs, things like that, like what would be the best approach to utilize that fund versus saving state aid, which I could take from, it's up at the median stage, to supplement some salaries and we might need that considering.
It would be, I think, nice to have a itemization of what you're... But that's a little unrealistic since these things surface in between the meetings. So perhaps we could pass a resolution or an agreement that funds not to exceed, you know, $2,000 out of T and D would be agreeable to the trustees between this meeting and the next.
Okay.
You've done that in the past.
Okay, perfect.
And it's really just for this time of the year when the budget gets down to the wire and we need to move on to other funds.
Of course, and I mean, we're coming to the end of the fiscal year, we've got, okay. So what is your sense of the not to exceed number?
I mean, $2,000 or more.
Okay, so let's, I move a motion that the trustees will empower the director to expend his sum from gift and donations not to exceed $2,000 between this meeting and the next meeting as we schedule it. And if that will help, that's... Terry has seconded it, you have a vote? You can handle this.
Thank you. All right, thank you on that. And then Dorothy and I, and Mark, Dorothy, who's our new assistant director, and a dream come true, she's hit the ground running and I would already be also about it. She's fantastic. She has done a little research on what we're looking at for the new job description that we're seeing there, I'd recommend for FY '23. And so we put that together, we put together job posting and we're kind of getting ready to hit the ground on this one, even though we still have yet to fill our new services positions. So we will have two new positions as of July first.
Does this new position have a name?
We're calling it Innovation Assistant, which does have, that's what it would be. So that applies.
All right, could we break away from your report for just a minute? Terry, you were referring to Terry, has discovered her manuscript of notes for the minutes of the April 27 meeting. Glenn Thomas could have read them into the record now and then we could take a vote to approve, would you?
Sure.
Thank you. Why do we have four?
The Board of Trustees opened the meeting on April 27th. And we had a discussion about the demolition, which was expected to start on May 9th. Sir Pro and the staff would clear stuff up first. And then rat traps were mentioned because droppings were seen in multiple places in the building. Next item is programs, which were discussed for the month of May, including program on lighthouses. And the planned sale, which is planned for the date of this weekend. And a new art show is planned in June with a reception on the 18th, which will be the celebrate Newbury Day. Then we had a discussion, third topic, on the budget, what the funds were and that Erin will meet with the assistant finance accountant and the budget for 2023 passed. And then request for reconsideration for policy for review, $250 fee for closing the check account to go to friends. Well, there's just a comment here that was said at the time, sublimate and rich, not replace. The new assistant director, search was discussed, was not completed at that time. There was an expectation that a meeting on May 18th would be Zoom after July in person. And there was a discussion about the space at Pusyn Plaza and using that for activities. There's a space, I didn't write it down, but it is where the Council on Aging is expanding into that area and will be moving. It's right next to the rental space of Town Hall. Sorry, I'm not reading from my notes, but that was the context of it.
First word there.
And the meeting closed. I didn't write down the time.
It was quite filled.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Terry. Move approval of the meetings as read, that would be April 27th. Motion, agreement? Unanimously approved, okay. Thank you, Terry. All right, Erin, back to you.
Sure. I think that's about it. I wanted to ask if there are any questions on the new kind of budget summary and in understanding if there's anything I can explain. I was pulling from different files, kind of pulled the information together into one place. So I wanted to make sure that it made sense to everybody.
Very coherent.
Yes.
Thank you. But as ever, I'm confused. You speak of the total funds budget.
Yes.
What does that count, what?
So the total funds is anything that is not covered by a municipal budget.
Oh.
So that includes all of the funds, the Randall Shine Hatch Weeks, state aid, gift and memorial, et cetera. It also includes the money from state aid that's allocated for salaries for this year. And so when that's all added together, you get that number. We didn't have, really, I couldn't find a number for our total library budget anywhere as well as the total funds, all, everything together. So I found myself asking, what is our total? What is the total for these? So that's why I put them there. Not sure.
I didn't bring the FinCom report to the town meeting, which does have a breakout, the FY '23, if you wanted to look. Maybe we could go back and find last year's for the '22.
Or...
The FinCom's report to the town meeting.
FinCom's report, okay.
Yeah. They did have a total budget figure on it.
Oh, for the library?
Yeah.
I would love to see that, yes.
Yeah, I'll see if I have it at home.
Thank you.
I didn't bring the files of four pounds now.
It may be, it also may be on the available on the town website.
It is under FinCom. Yeah, thanks, Dick.
Okay, that's great. And some of these budget items, which include the funds, I would imagine that the FinCom might not include these. And they did change, so midway through the year, this past year, Gene had upped the budget allocations for state aid, gift and memorial, which is what all of these were on those old spreadsheets. So it did change, so it should be off a little bit, but still like to see that. That would be great. Yeah, so other than tightening this up as far as the amounts go, probably going to go with what Town Hall gives me for our expenses for the most part, just because the tallies were a little bit off and start fresh with the new fiscal year.
Good plan.
And that, I'd go with it, aside from, I'm not sure if anything else needs more elaboration and I just feel like it's presenting our questions.
No, I think that's good. Want to move on to talk about the collection policy?
That would be awesome.
Did you get that copy of it?
I have, everything is right there, but I can't write it because we have no iPad.
Of course, I forget how many spawn of two people are.
I have two copies. No, I don't either typically, but can we use my digital today? So on collection development policy, there are actually two documents here. One is a policy which we are required to have on the books of the library. And it seems there, it looks like there was one, because there's one on the list here, but Gene wasn't able to find it before she left and I haven't been able to find it. So we have a new one. And it's ready to go, but along with it, because they're so interconnected, is a modification to our form for request for reconsideration of library materials. It just kind of provides some information about how materials are selected and, you know, the ALA Library Bill of Rights and censorship, things like that. So it just kind of gives a little bit of a landscape to the form, which previously didn't have, it was just a kind of a plain form. So that would be a modification and that's a new, a brand new document.
Well, the collection development policy, the EDP, is thorough. It's grounded in the statute and grounded also in the concepts surfacing from ALA. Did you like this?
No, God, no. I pieced it together from other libraries.
Okay, but you did.
I pulled it together, but could not take credit for writing it.
I have a grammatical problem with it.
Yeah, I would second that. Would you have time?
I may have time to look at what we're doing.
I'd be great.
Would you? I mean, if you can't do it all, then... Serpico, I'll let you know. Your plates are all full of them.
It is, but it doesn't mean I'm not looking for things to do other than the thing I'm doing.
Consider yourself, okay, in that context, all right, is this, is the sense of the board, I would like to get this, these two aspects of our collection policy, legal history and local history collection aside, but I would like to get these at least agreed in principle because I would like to have them available on the circulation desk in the event, God forbid, that they are necessary. If we have the policy, we can advertise it to an individual requesting reconsideration and send him or her it with them, whatever, away. So I would like at least to get the sense of it and to approve it provisional upon Dick's editing.
Right, and the other part of that is that legally we are supposed to have this on books.
All right, all right. Guys, what do you think? Cool, okay.
And it is, it is the type of thing that we can revisit and, you know, change, modify.
Okay.
And I do plan to hit you with a new policy every month and stuff. Work it into that.
Oh, this is something to look forward to.
Give me, give power too much.
It would be good, I just wanted to think, some of the publications from the library community available also. The Intellectual Freedom Manual, you say that?
I think I have that linked to within both the policy and the request for reconsideration.
Good.
All right.
Hard copies? There's definitely hard copies available.
Oh, they have hard copies on hand? Yeah. And we, so it has the ALA Library Bill of Rights, the ALA Freedom to Read Statement and the ALA Freedom to View Statement. Just because those are pertinent to the issue.
I just wonder if it would be good to have.
How long are they?
I don't know all of them.
Because what somebody could do is they could, if they're interested in it, the desk can print it out for that.
Okay, this is just a few pages and actually about.
Yeah, first is printing a bunch of them and then nobody asking for them. But that's a great suggestion, though.
They don't have a freedom to listen. I'm not joking.
Yeah, for audio.
Because a lot of, I mean, a lot of censorship around rap music and so forth. You know, it's interesting what gets listened and what doesn't, so.
Let's check on that.
Okay, motion, I'll make a motion to, for the proceeds to accept and publish the collection development policy as presented. Seconded, call for both. Okay, unanimously, we've accepted the collection development policy subject to its, its editing. And I want to make a second motion to accept and publish the request for reconsideration of library materials as, as presented to us. Again, subject to typing up or editing and make these, these documents available immediately for use within the library as library patrons. So I move it. And call for both unanimous. And so these policies are now part of the operating here.
Were these sent as PDFs or word documents?
I think it's PDF.
So if you have them as word documents, so that I can edit them.
You need them when you're that way.
Well, my PDF software can, but it's, you know, it gets pretty garbled.
And they, the library would really understand that because as of very soon, we're not going to have a DUB anymore, so.
I don't use, I don't use a DUB product. There are a lot of good PDFs.
Yep.
Okay, where are we at?
And is it both documents?
Anything that I'm editing, I want to have as a doc, so, yeah.
The answer is yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Good God.
Would you prefer to get the budget spreadsheets and financials in Excel? I usually send them as a PDF.
No, that's fine for me.
They're fine.
Okay.
They're fine. Work whatever's easier for you.
Okay.
Honestly.
No, generally PDFs are the right thing because you don't want people editing your work. Well, I'm broken, so I get that, but, but when, when it's going to be edited, let's go back to the source.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what you do.
Shall we move through that? Next item on the, the intended staff wages discussion about. Do you want to lead that, Erin?
Sure. So we did have an applicant for these services that we made an offer to who really, really wanted to work for us. But the wage was so low. She could not make it work because it was such a big pay cut. It was over $800 a month pay cut. Our, our, our part timers make $15.68 a second hour. The going rate in the new report, McDonald's, if you want to work there, is between $15 and $19 an hour. As a, and I, you know, we did, we just received our, our budget request to add another staff person. However, we also want to retain the ones we have and we have incredible staff each and every one of them. They all go above and beyond in every way. They're just incredible, so. And, and to be fair, you know, it's, it's not even close to a livable wage. I know that West Newbury, I believe, is doing a, a survey of their town wages, which could be something when that's done that will give us some more insight into.
And to support that thought, West Newbury's warrant for a town meeting contains an item, a set aside item in anticipation of increases for town employees' wages.
Okay. So there is that. We also need to work on having a way that people can move through their range for their wages, because right now where you're at is where you stay. Aside from a 2% COLA, cost of living adjustment. There's no merit, there's no merit raises, things like that. Or there's really no way to move through your range setup. So between that and the, the already little wage, I wanted to flag it to everybody's attention so that you know the issue. I, I don't know how to solve it. Other than I have some ideas. I met with Tracy at Town Hall. The one idea that if it turns out to be okay, that nothing can happen until the budget request for FY 24. But, and then my other idea was based on something that a library in New Hampshire did. Now, it's a different state, so I don't know what, what legal parameters it is going to have to do with this. But we will have leftover money in our salaries budget due to our vacancy and new services. Is that money still something we can use? Could we do, for instance, a sign-on bonus? Could we do a staff retention bonus? It wouldn't be an annual wage increase, but it would be something. If it's, if it's legal, if it's allowed.
I don't know.
I'm just trying to think creatively, like, what can we do to help?
I want to talk structurally about this.
Sure.
Because it has nothing to do with the quality of people or what they deserve.
Of course.
But I do think it's a challenge to send out a bonus in one year that we may not be able to duplicate in any other year because the, even, even if it's viewed and everybody agrees, oh, yes, this is a one-time thing. When you get to the next year and that, whatever it turns out to be, isn't in your paycheck, you feel it. You've come, you know, this was a, you know, if, if we can't duplicate it in the following year, it's a structural problem, I think psychologically for, for people. And I, that's a problem I haven't figured out how to, how to solve in terms of helping the staff.
Well, I think a bonus is, it's inherent in a bonus is sometimes it's a big one, sometimes it's a small one, sometimes it's zero. So I think it actually is part of what a bonus is.
Well, it's just because it's not part of a system that's existed in the past. We would have to establish kind of new way of talking about it with our staff. That's all. That was my only real concern is, we, we don't know, we'd have to find out whether we can possibly do it. I don't know what, how, how the town would think about our offering bonuses since salaries are, are, aren't based on our decisions.
Well, I know teachers in Andover got bonuses last year for the all, you know, excellent, I'm not going to, the horrible year that, that all public school teachers in Massachusetts had. Teachers received a bonus. It was a one-time thing. There was money to be distributed. It could have been COVID money. I don't know where the money came from, but there's got to be something we can do.
And I'm curious about that timing weight in two years.
No, 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 it was a one-time thing.
And I'm encouraged that another library actually did this. Granted, it's not in Massachusetts, it's in New Hampshire, but I, I was encouraged to find that another library has done this and found a way. But it's a question, you know, what happens with that extra money? It's happened for a number of years as we've kind of lost people, like where does it go?
Does it revert to the state, to town?
Right, or, or is there a way to kind of utilize that fund, which really was part of our budget?
Could we distribute it to salaries, which is what it was intended for in the first place?
Exactly.
Even though on a bonus basis with all the cautions and caveats that might be attached to it.
I mean, after this, we're never going to have town again, right?
Well, there are. Is there a step program for any of the other town employees, like the state employees?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Because if we, if we could institute the step program that was clearly.
I don't know what a step program is.
Well, it's years of service. You get reviewed from you're hired into a particular step in a particular job description because of your experience and your education, et cetera. You don't necessarily start at the very bottom. And then every year you have an evaluation and you move up a step that's separate from a cost of living wage. And you know what it's going to be.
Public school teachers, that's how it works. Right, is that a range?
Yeah.
There's a.
Well, it sounds like a conversation with the HR department at town, because they're, they're setting the, they're setting salary levels.
Right, and really what I, my understanding is that we have our budget and we just need to work within it. So what it, so I could conceivably, you know, for the part timers who are at the bottom of their range. But I could up them as high as I wanted to, but I'd have to have money in our budget to cover it. So it becomes a budget. But I do have the freedom to change it and kind of use the budget as I see fit. It's just that our budget is pretty narrow.
You have, there must be state libraries in some places in Massachusetts. And there are a step program.
Well, I, I think, you know, that's for the future year, but for this year is really what we're looking at.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, obviously, there's got to be a lot of investigations, but for this year at least, if you've got extra money in the budget, I guess the question is, can we use that?
Yep.
To make.
Keep it simple, yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or the current hourly stipend to Emma and Katie is the same as it was at the beginning of this FY 22? No change?
It will change on July 1st.
Correct, okay, but 22 is as it was at the beginning of the year?
Yes.
All right, that being the case. Six weeks involved is, that points up really. Why don't we just invade state aid?
And that, that is, we have that available as a resource to us.
Yeah.
Our budget request asked to move funds out of state aid to be covered in the salaries budget completely. But it does bring us up to go back to doing that.
My thing is though, is, is if you've got money budgeted for salaries and nobody's been filling that one position.
Right.
There shouldn't be an issue with moving that to the other people because it's part of salary budget. Asking for state aid is something different and you might have to go through a lot of logistics to do that.
No, it's our money.
Yeah, and it's, it's for staffing. So to me, that's, that's a different.
Right, it would be two, it would be two separate things. We may be both.
Yeah.
Right, so we may, we may utilize tap into state aid to supplement those wages for FY 23.
Right.
But I, I'd still like to find out if we're able, it won't be a ton of money that's left over. But it'll be enough, I think, to show almost good faith. We value you. You've worked hard.
It's been a while, yeah.
And, you know, and throughout a lot of kind of upheaval.
Are we the ones that say yes or no to this?
We don't know yet.
Okay, sorry.
At some point, we have to say yes or no.
Right.
But we don't know.
We have to know it's an option.
Please do it. So can we at least vote on it now before? Yes or no, whether you agree with it or not agree with it, to know if we can go forward to the next step?
I don't think we need to, the oratory conversations don't need to be voted upon.
Okay.
If we decide to, for the last six weeks of fiscal year 22, use some of our, what, $40,000 hanging in state aid?
I'm thinking, well, if we're going to tap into state aid, I'm thinking that would be a FY 23 thing, that we wouldn't change.
No, 22 only to finish off this fiscal year.
That's where I was looking into what remains in our salaries budget.
So it's not state aid, so it's the budget that we have to pay, to pay the invisible portion that's not doing the job.
So how much is, is in that?
I think it's going to wind up the, I was trying to, to figure out what it's, what it's going to look like. I think it would be about $5,000.
Okay, so it's.
And how many, how many people do you want to split it from?
It would be, it's really who's been here for the last year. So the way I look at it is as a retention bonus, COVID-ish thing. Well, you've been through it and you've done a lot of work. So it would be either three ways, three ways, yeah, yeah.
I think currently stepping in and doing this, who's doing the new stuff in the absence?
That's what I mean. Katie and Emma, our two part timers have stepped up to try to handle it all.
So they're actually getting paid for the work that's being done that they shouldn't have to do.
Yeah.
So it makes sense to them.
So there's a good argument, but, but again, I don't know the, I don't know how the HR, can we do it?
Yeah, so I have an email into Tracy, but she's on vacation this week, so I couldn't, I couldn't get an answer. I do hope to hear back from her next week to get more information on, maybe to see if possible within the confines of whatever our town policies are, my laws.
Well, she did approve increases before.
For specifically using up the salaries budget as a bonus.
Yeah.
So I think that, yeah, so that's where I just need.
That makes a good point.
Yes, for salaries.
Let's.
Okay.
Let's agree to, agree to do that if it's feasible.
Great.
All right? And do we need a, do we need a motion to do that?
No.
No.
I'm really glad we did it.
Oh, yes. The sentiment of the board is.
Yeah. All right, and at the next meeting, I'll bring back to you whatever information I find on that and probably ideas on how to utilize some state aid money to get their salary wage up.
I think Margaret's observation about context is well taken. So, but yeah, these guys have really come through.
They have.
Yeah, they have. So let's show if it's at all possible. If not, we can finally take. Perfect.
I said as long as they're not gluten-free, then we have to go ahead. Yeah, but gee.
Just eat the cardboard. It's about as whatever.
I, I just want to let people know I need to leave in five minutes.
No, that's cool.
So if there's something that you need me for specifically, could we jump to that? I don't know what that could be.
I don't care because we can work form whether these are or not, so we can take votes.
Sounds good.
And anything, any nasty work that we have left to do, we're going to file your budget.
Give to me and I'll say, you know what? I'll be here next week.
No, that's great.
I think you're getting most of the nasty stuff.
Yeah. You look brilliant. Guys are awesome. I wanted to.
I wanted to pick up a couple of crazy things of y'all online. Pass these out. One of the things that has bugged me over time is the security system or non-system that exists here. Are there two things?
Are there two things?
There were two pages.
Oh, there are?
Oh, that's a mistake, sorry.
Are they both together? So it's only one packet? Okay.
Okay.
I ended up with two.
All right. Security team, Linda Allen's company recently got the monitoring contract for the security system here in the library. And I know Linda somewhat, and asked if the security system could be reviewed with an eye toward, in these crazy times, providing us with a better look at what's going on in and outside of the building. I'm concerned personally in the wintertime with our employees, and they're all girls. We don't have power lifters working in the library. So once the darkness comes on in the early evening, safety becomes a concern. And thought came forward, as I was talking to them, of a widescreen in the circulation area so that circulation desk folks could look at the front door in the front lobby and know who is coming in. Again, crazy times, kind of built forward from the request for reconsideration. My thought on the cost of this thing is to look toward the NAID monies out of which we drew some money for the use of an archivist in our essay room. We put thirty thousand of eighty-five aside, seventy-five aside for that. Perhaps we could consider this as something within the remainder of the fund. That's in addition to the discussion we've already had on the old rug, which you haven't seen.
No.
Wow, that's really...
Yeah. We have to get that out so you can look.
Does that have a picture?
Yes.
I believe it or not, read my email, there was a picture on the spot. I saw the picture, but I have not seen it.
Okay, they put it, Nick and his pet.
Oh.
That's okay.
We can take it out a second time for that.
There you go.
One of the neat things on the rug, in communication with Dale Ferner, who is the sister of the woman who donated the rug, Dale said that she has two other rugs, which the great grandmother pieced together back in the eighteen eighties. And so the themes are very similar. One is a view of like Switch Center, and the other is just a farmyard scene, because we have farmyard animals all over this thing too. But, which is supposedly the downtown Byfield in the eighteen eighties, or not, we just don't know yet. So we're trying to, I need to find out what the true provenance of this thing is, because we're not gonna sink a ton of money into it in terms of restoration and repair and mounting it for occasional display. My sweet sister, who's involved in the museum business, says, you don't wanna put that thing out all the time. You just don't wanna have it exposed to UV. And there's a part in the back of it which has faded out, the expert who came in looked at it. But anyway, that's the second, that's the second thought we had on the NAID money. And we've got to pursue also. Y'all have noticed, no doubt, that the bathrooms should come in here to the lobby are all marked boy, girl, in wheelchair. But good luck till you're trying to get in or out in a wheelchair. There is no opener for any of those doors, so we need to pursue that as well. I think Sarah had kicked it forward, but we've gotta pick that up and move it again forward once we get through this construction stuff.
Right.
So...
I would like to voice one thing about the NAI, and that is, in coming up with new ways to spend it, we're going under construction and the insurance is gonna pay to repair and replace exactly what was there in the year two thousand.
Yeah.
We may want to utilize some money if we have options to better use space. I could see things coming up where we want a different kind of storage, you know, table than sure. I just foresee throughout this construction process, opportunities to make changes for us going into the future. And so where, you know, wealth replacement costs, we may need to allocate a little bit more money to get it to where it should be for future goals for the library.
Sure.
So that's the only area that I'd like to kind of keep in mind before we commit to using that money. And then maybe like in the fall, once we know how much we have left going from that, get into the other ways.
It only makes sense, and that's conventional stuff and repairing the...
My second question was to the team one, at eighteen thousand dollars, do we have to send up for bids because it's over ten thousand?
Probably. It's over ten.
Right.
For sure.
And I was thinking that for the rug as well, because I think that was just...
And if it be a way, I don't know, scale it down, get below ten or something. I do not know. I'm just recalling what Dick Pasery used to tell us.
So we may need like another couple of people, but this is great because we're the ones that are...
Yeah, they're already here and they're local.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, another thing, and this actually reverts back to the thing you picked up. I was talking to Eva Jackman at the museum on Monday, and the historical commission of, the Newbury Historical Commission has offered the library a spinning wheel, which was part of the Stara Humphrey Barton auction four years ago, June. And there's a, there's a photo of, this is the only copy I brought, I'm sorry. There's a photo of the spinning wheel here. Eva cautioned that it is, it's a pretty good sized item. It's a large wheel. It looks incomplete there, its spinning wheels go, I'm no expert, just Googled it. And, well, we have the rug, we have a case from Byfield, we have the reproduction of the train and the Great Lakes, which used to hang in the yellow school, the Maishwood School. But so the plaque says, I don't know, it just struck me that a spinning wheel would be kind of slick.
The woman who donated the rug also has more things, but she just moved to Brook Street Village.
You're kidding?
No.
More stuff?
Yes.
How much, what was the bid on fixing that rug? Ten K something?
It's right around there, yeah.
Which is, to me, that's a gift that keeps on giving. I don't know, I love, it's a beautiful piece, but I can't see, put anywhere near that kind of money. I don't think it's... Displaying it. I think it isn't gonna be out, you know, in view at every second of time, so.
Peggy, my sister Peggy gave me a reference to another tech sale specialist, museum specialist down in the South Shore. Who knows, this may be what it is.
Maybe.
You know, repair it, restore it, clean it, and mount it. This is where it is, eight to ten, you know?
There's probably future considerations to it.
Oh, absolutely.
Insurance, care, like if there was, if we were doing construction or pipe first, with things of that nature that are documented, historic items, they have to be deep to bring in experts to like work. But like, there's a lot of, lots of things that could impact us down the road that we wanna just make sure we can handle.
I have to leave, but it was nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you, seeing you all.
Yeah, whatever time and day is fine with me for the next meeting. I don't know how you do decide.
Anything, though, you kind of whack it around and figure it out. Is there any time which is worse for you?
Tuesdays from eleven to one.
There we go.
Volunteering. And Wednesday mornings are bad, too.
Is this an okay time?
Yeah, I mean, you think is the only time. Oh, I'm usually fine. I know I don't have to come. Yeah, I'm usually fine. I just talk to you. But, I mean, during the day. Thank you. Of course. It's a pleasure. But I don't have to, I don't have to stop, but. See you next Tuesday. See you about...
So five thirty, maybe?
Okay.
My only request is that I really wanna be able to go to genealogy club meetings. And I haven't been able to go for over a year because Jean and Frances are consistently planning them at the same time as this meeting.
Oh, no, that's horrible.
On second Wednesday, so we won't do second Wednesday. But right now, I'm not sure what day they're doing, but I hope for that.
Well, as soon as you know.
Let's...
Let us know, and then we'll work around it.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Oh, really?
I really want to be involved with them. And they, and it's gotten kind of thin, there's not very many people going because they haven't had any programs provided or planned.
We have one coming up that we're just in the middle of booking. For July. And we're booking it so that it's not at the same time as the genealogy meetings.
Well, that's why I was also thinking of maybe if there's anybody who's some of the leftover money, some programs.
We don't have, I don't have leftover programming money, I only have leftover salaries. Oh, I see, you mean from the expense budget?
I don't know.
Oh. So programs don't count as materials for our ninety percent requirement by the state.
Oh.
So the only things that count as materials are things that strictly, so books, CDs, museum passes.
Oh, that's why I said that, it was the museum pass. Because you can get passes, I think, to the New England Geological Society.
Yeah, I opened up, but I couldn't find the pass. It looks like it's free to go, am I mistaken?
Uh, yeah, you have to pay to belong.
You can't just, oh, it's a membership, not an admission pass. Okay.
To our library fee members, or if the divisionals are members?
I don't know.
I see, I misunderstood. I thought it was like a museum pass for the museum science type of thing, where we get passes out to our patrons. So it's a membership thing, kind of like NIHGS?
Yes.
Like that, okay. Not to give them, I don't think that's for that. And what was it called, New England?
Geological.
Geological Society?
On Newbury Street.
Yeah.
And they do have programs sometimes there where non-members can go.
Once we've gone down all our check, I have one, and I don't wanna discuss, but are we there yet? We there?
Sure.
So, and this has to be partly because I've been on a commission a little bit, but in the space of the last month, we've retired a longtime library director, head of the trustees, and welcomed in a new director without any news, without a single press release. And we need to remedy that, and we need to do, get some peace. Perhaps Jean and Dick could do one together, perhaps, to talk about changing of regard, I don't know. But we need to figure that out. Yeah, normally, I would take that on, unfortunately, I think that's a little bit bigger than I can wrestle with in the next few weeks. But I do think time is a-wasting. And I was really surprised to see how minimal the election coverage and time meeting coverage was on Newbury.
Oh, okay.
And the paper, it used to be much better. So something's happened. Because all the other towns got much bigger rights and art there. So I don't know if they don't have a reporter for Newbury anymore, whatever, so.
Yeah. And one of our attendees at the meeting at the museum on Monday pointed out the miscaptions, the completely inaccurate captions of the front page photograph and the jump page photograph. Speaking of Market Square, for pictures which were plainly taken elsewhere up on High Street.
It's a tough business right now.
Yeah, aren't they all?
But we have to hold up our end, so I don't know how to manage that, but I do think it needs to be a to-do list.
Yep.
To get, you know, I feel bad that I couldn't, I was, I was actually in Boston, I think, taking care of my grandson. When the last goodbye party or some stuff happens, I couldn't even make them, so.
Well, I don't know, I'm trying to work on something like that, but I'm not used to doing it. I did do one.
There was a, there was a very nice piece about the, was it Amesfree there outgoing?
That's Jim Sullivan, yeah.
The library director.
Yeah.
So you can look at that and see kinds of things.
I don't routinely read the paper.
No, it's available awkwardly online.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Needs to be done. All right, Erin, any other thoughts? Margaret?
The other thing is, you know, we talked about having an event for...
But we are, yeah, July twenty-seventh.
For June.
Yes.
Okay.
We had, I have a former, a board actually, a former Scunning, and Boston Point Uncle. And, you know, we need to get a guestbook building for people to be able to write, you know, notes to her, write their memories, things like that.
So that's a piece that can go to the paper, too?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and...
Well, maybe that's, that's the, that's the...
Right. Changes, changes and celebrations at every town library.
So we may be able to handle all three.
That'd be great. That could be really good.
One step forward, two steps back.
And we have changes in the friends as well.
Yeah.
Really?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, we're gonna have some new board members, I think, because a couple are stepping down as their kids have graduated and moved on to college and they have other things going on now. So it's one of those, it's kind of like when the PTA change is over.
Yeah.
You know? So...
Excuse me, what date is the party?
I believe it's July twenty-seventh, that should be a Wednesday.
It is, yep.
And I think it is five to seven, I think I've got it on my calendar. And it starts at either four or five, I can't, I can't record it right. And that was because when we were planning, she was going through so much.
Yeah.
At that time, and we didn't know durations of things. So we figured hopefully by July, she'll be knowing more about it better. It's a real festive thing.
Well, she's become a professional sister. She's become a professional sister, because her sister moved down. And now her brother's moved, or...
Yeah, brothers.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, for the next meeting?
So we wanted not on a second Wednesday. We'll look at for either, well, first would be pre-quel. Do we wanna go for the third again?
But there's no guarantee that they'll have the genealogy meeting.
Well, it works out to be about a month from tonight anyway.
Yeah.
One, seven, eight, seventeen, two fifteen, half past June.
That's the holiday. It's a Thursday.
My third?
I just can't detail us on all of the information that's on me.
Motion to adjourn?
A second?
Done.